Morning, everyone. Let's call a meeting, George. Roll call.
Senate is here. Push your red button.
Wen's here.
Sherwin here.
Beal's here.
Push your button and say Davis here.
We got Bob Davis here, too. He just came in, so. The only ones we're lacking is Perry, Paul Roman, and Supervisor Grace.
We have four.
We do have a quorum.
You gotta get it in a distance. I enjoyed your music a few, two ago.
Everyone has had a chance for you to ask for approval of the planning board minutes from September 8th.
I'll swam over. Senate seconds.
Sherwin thirds.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm over. Approval of the 239 minutes from September 8th, 2020.
Senate phones.
Wen's second.
Wen's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm over. New business, 2020 census, planning board.
So the census has been pushed back until October 31st or 30th, whoever the last day of October is. They did push that back based on a judicial order. We don't know what that's gonna entail, if there's gonna be some kind of feedback on that or not.
Shane, can you talk louder? Maybe talk into the.
I don't have a mic, so.
Oh, okay. So what?
So the census got pushed back until October 30th. So that was by a judicial order. So we're not sure if that's gonna have any kind of impact on any, you know, if they're gonna have another judicial order that, you know, makes it goes back, or we're not really sure. But right now, we're still pushing people to respond until the end of October. For the hazard mitigation plan.
Shane, question.
Question on the census. What sort of public outreach, as far as people going out, is happening in Shangri-La County? Because I know I've been tracking our results and we've been stacking. We've been staying right around 54% for the last couple of months. I haven't seen any improvement. Do we have people actually going door to door, then making phone calls? What's happening?
So as of September 30th, the Census Bureau stopped locally. So there was, her name was Shannon Wright, and you'll see all the signs around the area that, you know, respond to your census. She was putting those out, but I get a, I got an email from her a couple of weeks ago saying that she was done. So as far as I know, there are no more census workers trying to go door to door or anything. But to my knowledge, there might still be people with surveys going door to door. As far as trying to push people, they're done.
What's our county rate? I haven't looked at that in about two weeks.
I think we were at around 60%, 58, somewhere around there.
How's that compared to 10 years ago?
10 years ago was around the same.
Same number.
Yeah, no difference, really.
However, if we take a look at it nationally, because my brother works in census stuff and he's Tennessee and he's going around, he's Arkansas and South Carolina and stuff. You know, some of their areas, even their rural areas, are 70% and then more metropolitan areas, they're a high 80s. You know, it's really been like such a disadvantage of so few people are responding. I don't know what we can do about it, though.
I'm gonna try and pull it up here. So we're at 57.5, and 10 years ago, it was 58.1. And then I'll do each town. Oops, missed some. You can see the state land areas, those are pretty low. You know, up in Columbus, New Berlin, everything down in this area, which I didn't grab, but they're all pretty good. Guilford is at 55.1.
Shouldn't they do an adjustment? When it's over, there's some adjustments to try to compensate for the other town?
Yeah, what they do is they take an average of who has responded and assume who hasn't, so yeah.
I mean, they got some baseline number to base the percentage off of originally, so. There's gotta be a fudge factor at the end, so.
So hazard mitigation plan, if I can talk. We're sending out worksheets for each of the towns. It's ranking your risk factors. We want those back by the 26th. So if you have your town, you'll get those back soon as possible.
Do you need to have me email?
You can email.
Those are the ones you already sent us about probably three weeks ago?
No, this is a new one that we sent, probably a week or two ago.
You sent our copies, so.
We did not.
It was all emails? Okay. I'll check my spam. I haven't gotten none a week and a half ago.
Yeah, if you.
Other than what I had when I came into the meeting.
Or if you didn't get it, we can send it again.
Okay, I'll pick one.
Transportation, we did a workshop probably two or three weeks ago now for service providers. And they basically went over how to use to get their trip planner. We talked about, you know, different programs that get their has. And also, we talked about different issues that service providers are still having, transportation, unemployment. We're gonna be doing another one, probably in the late winter this year, so. And that one will be more for the general public. And that's all I have.
Hey, Shane, I actually have sent this to you in a document, so you can share it. But the SME Prime Program Unit, Unidilla Valley, we're still fundraising. A member of the Society of Manufacturing Engineers Board of Directors was out of engineering for Corning globally. He's retired, but he facilitated a virtual meeting last week with the person who replaced him. And that's led to a meeting being scheduled for tomorrow with the head of Corning's Oniana plant. We think that once we get one company on board funding the project, others will fall in line. Shabani's interested, Raymond's interested, and Unison's interested, and Ampenol is interested. There's an organization called Cuck K L, the Council on Adult and Experiential Learning. I did a application to present at their annual meeting. It was gonna be in New Orleans in November. I was hoping to have a trip to New Orleans, but apparently I'm going to do a virtual presentation on the Corning project. I've got 68 people signed up to watch that. And I think it's good to do things like this because, you know, these are all, these are all people that are usually in bigger businesses and have some input on where they relocate to or where they expand. The Society of Manufacturing Engineers, as I was talking about the Prime Program, we talked about the Corning Project that I, the project I ran at Corning, and they would like me to present at one of their first live events. And I think this is, that's a great opportunity because usually those seminars are attended by 100, 150 people all in manufacturing, which might bring us, you know, somebody to occupy some of our buildings in the county. It puts me in front of, puts me in front of some pretty high-level people. Unison has asked Morrisville to develop a program for the apprentices in the field of mechatronics. Jason Zebok's gonna schedule a meeting with them later this week, early next week, so we can discuss how we're going to present it. They would like to have the people off-site for four days a week. So it may be something that we can split between the Norwich and Morrisville campuses because of equipment. And perhaps we can open it up to other companies, which I think would be something that would be very, very good for our area. SUNY Broom is developing a two-year mechatronics program. I'm advising them on this. The program has to address emerging green energy jobs. The thing we're struggling, people with my skill set struggle with is what the heck's the difference? The skill set changes very little just because the jobs are green, right? An electron is an electron. A mechanical device that controls a heating, you know, a heating duct is the same mechanical device. But, you know, we're working on this. Shane, I think Southern Tier Eights asked Carol Miller to do some work on this, and I'm working with Carol at an hour meeting with STA yesterday morning. In the energy field, you know, I participate in all the tier energy network meetings, and I see a lot of new technology. So what I do when I see things that I think are advantageous to people in our region or companies here, I facilitate Zoom meetings. One of the energy, one of the winners of the 76 West Challenge allows you to dynamically switch from propane fuel oil to low-cost electricity based on grid pricing for your boilers. CB Pet Nutrition is really interested in this because they have Sherburn Electric available. And there are times when there's so much renewable energy on the grid that is basically free. So it would allow them to switch back and forth and cut their operating costs. Nicerda, I attended a virtual business council in New York meeting on Nicerda grants for training. One grant was to train facilities' operations employees in operating and maintaining new smart heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems. I brought that opportunity to the attention of UHS and CMH because both those organizations are doing, you know, big construction projects. And that's something we will need to do. If you go to places that have some of these new systems, including the engineering building at SUNY Broom, one end of that building in December last year was 82 degrees and the other end was 46. They just, they don't, they don't know how to balance their system, and it's all being run dynamically from off-site. Another grant is for high school and college students working in the green energy field for internships. Pays $16 an hour. Heat pumps are considered green, so I brought that to the attention of Blue Ox in Oxford. And I also brought it to the attention of Jason Zebok because Morrisville runs a green energy program. I need to look through these ponds. There's a bunch of other things, you know, solicitations that Nicerda has. And they just came out Friday, and I need to look through those and see if there's any other opportunities. And then in the realm of entrepreneurship, I've been to four days of virtual meetings, both in VIA and the Kaufman Foundation since we last met. And I want to put it together, a little outline of a presentation on the topic that Carrie and I have been talking about. But one of the things that the Kaufman Foundation kind of talked about a lot was the four types of entrepreneurs. There's the wanderpreneur, which is the person that wants to start a business, right? They don't know what they want to do. They have, they're not sure. A lot of times they buy a business, a lot of times they start a franchise. Sometimes they're just looking for that idea, or sometimes they have an idea and they need some, you know, they need help in developing that into a business plan. The traditional entrepreneur, right, there's somebody that's up, is running or is ready to start a business. They have a plan in some form in mind and are usually motivated by a lifestyle and our financial gain. There's the entrepreneur, which is someone who works for a company and improves how that company operates, right? And the word that they use in today is kaizen. You'll see that all over at Raymond, right? They're looking for people that are entrepreneurs that will do that, you know, innovative thing within the facility itself. And then there's social entrepreneurs who do things for their community. I think our Blues Fest is a great example of that, right? Where we took something from nothing and grew it into a, you know, internationally recognized festival. And then the other thing that they talk about is types of entrepreneurs, right? There are replicators. They simply do something that somebody else is already doing. And you see that on our main street, right? There's always a business going out and another business coming in. If I think if we open one more CBD oil store, I'll go crazy. But, you know, that's, that's one style. The innovator is someone who replicates something that's already being done, but with some market differentiation. You have product or a process. The disruptor is somebody who has something entirely new, and I think Shabani is a great example of that, right? They came in, they have a different type of yogurt that's never been seen in this country, and we all know what happened there. And then there's the lifestyleist, and that's someone who wants to run a business that satisfies their personal lifestyle needs. You often see people like that. I know people who, you know, run machine shops and businesses like that. They can make more money working for somebody else, but they like the lifestyle. So, you know, this is something that comes out of Kaufman, and it's kind of an interesting concept, right? So how do we support all of these different types of entrepreneurs? And, you know, so I'm working on that. And then there's just weird stuff that comes up somehow through this work I'm doing with education and stuff. I wound up with a call from a professor at Hofstra University who's doing a study on what the math needs are in different fields. He is, you know, his research shows that about 80% of the math we teach in high school is irrelevant. So, you know, so how do you, how do you address that? And he may bring some of that if he gets the grant that he's working on, you know, we may do some work with some of the companies here locally, which I also think would be an interesting thing to bring here. And that's my report. Questions, comments?
What, Bruce, this?
Yeah.
Did you say that some studies shows that most high school math is becoming irrelevant?
About 80% of what high school math, if you're talking about people that work in the trades, is irrelevant, and it's never attached to what the actual skill set looks like. We teach, it's always taught as theoretical. It's not taught as the, you know, in the, the applied, as an applied subject.
Okay, so now, would you say that the Bosse teaches practical math?
No.
So where is it ever taught?
I have no idea. I don't think it is, right? I've been, I've hired people, Sally, right? I spent 30 years hiring people. They come into my shop and they'd have, right, they'd come to work for me and they would have three years of high school math. We did statistical analysis of our processes, and I had to teach statistical process control, right? The math for that. They'd taken statistics, but it wasn't, it wasn't statistics as applied in industry. The same thing with trigonometry. They would have, they would have taken, you know, high school trig, and yet they couldn't solve for a missing dimension on a blueprint.
And so the stuff that used to be taught in shop classes was practical.
Right.
And we don't have shop anymore.
Right.
That's what I'm wondering about Bosse's.
Some Bosse's programs may teach some of the shop math, but it doesn't, Bosse's no longer has, they don't have a mechatronics program. That's a high-skill, high-need job in the region, and the mechatronics program would transfer right over into the green energy field, right? We don't have a machine shop program there anymore. So we're not teaching, you know, unless they're teaching some trig in the carpentry program, I don't know where you would teach that. And nothing at Bosse's is at the higher level where they teach things like, you know, like statistics. And this is what, you know, this is what the professor from Hofstra and I have been talking about is, you know, what are the needs in, what are the needs in for different, what are the math skills that you need to work in different, different fields? We taught it with the Morrisville programs that I run. We teach it that way. It's applied. We teach it using the SME modules, and we apply that. Right after we teach the math, we start applying it to actual practical problems.
Is that still being done?
Right now, we're pretty much on hold. SUNY won't let professors travel more than 20 miles from the campuses. How do I bring, you know, the, when I did like the bootcamps, right? We were bringing employed, underemployed people onto the Morrisville campus, you know, for two-week programs. How do I do that? Companies are very reluctant to allow us into the facilities. I mean, I was over at Corning three weeks ago because they want us to do a two-year program for, you know, for toolmakers apprentices. And I was, I was at Corning, but they know me, and, I mean, to go into that plant, I have to gown up. And of course, I have to anyway because it's a medical facility, but anybody you visit, now they're, they're gowned up, they're in masks, and they're taking your temperature, right? How do I, you know, how do I do that when I'm bringing various? I just, we just don't see how to facilitate this right now. I do think it may be part of what they're looking to do with the Norwich High School with the Sherwin program. It adds some practicality to some of this stuff.
Yeah, we'll see.
Right? I'm trying to do it at Unidilla Valley, or I was doing it at Unidilla Valley when I was teaching over there, teaching the machining program, because you can teach all kinds of applied mathematics there.
But what, you mentioned the Sherwin program. What have you been told about that?
I got an initial solicitation letter from the superintendent of the school. I have been told that Scott Ryan is gonna run that program, and I've been asked to help develop it, but I've heard nothing from them since.
Well, stick to it.
She said, "Stick to it."
I tend not to let things go once I get started on them. And I hope it's not as frustrating as Oxford and Robo Rape, where they still have not sent the application in to get reimbursed for the, for the program. The ARC. It's driving ARC crazy, and it's driving me crazy.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess we move on. Does Kirk reach in the floor? George?
Pretty quickly, last month, we had a Zoom meeting with Encore, which is the company that has been looking at doing a solar project at the town property. The interconnect with NICEIC was very expensive, about a quarter to $20,000. The project was downsized, and at this point in time, I am kind of hesitant to say that it's gonna happen. I don't think the economics are gonna come together, that it's economically feasible. They said they'll keep us posted on it. Other things that I don't have any confirmation on, it appears that NICEIC has been upgrading our older-style lighting to LED. That's, we've been waiting for that since 2017. I know a former clerk, Al Hoffman, said, "Oh, they're putting in new lights in Guilford." I haven't been over there yet, but last night I deliberately went to Rockdale, and I believe we have the LED lighting in, which was supposed to save us about 60% on our electricity. That's still to be seen. So that's, that's pretty much what I have. Thank you.
Just a question, Shane. Just wondering if there's any updates on the antenna-based broadband.
So we're still working, we have a regional collaborative. We're, we've had a presentation to municipal leaders probably two weeks ago, I guess it was. And we did another one, actually, last night to school officials. We're still pushing forward. We're collecting data from the schools, municipalities. We had a conference call with USDA last Monday about some possible grant applications. But we're still just waiting for a suitable funding source to move ahead.
So what would you get funded and what would you apply for?
So it really depends on what the data shows. We, you know, there's one grant from USDA where it has to be contiguous, so which makes it hard if, you know, say Route 12 is completely served. How do you make it contiguous if you have pockets on both sides? So some of these applications aren't feasible for that reason. So just finding an application or a grant that will serve our needs and everybody else's needs at the same time as being acceptable. So as of right now, we're still waiting on funding sources.
Carrie?
We can't hear you, Carrie. You're muted or something. Can you do sign language? Don't know what's happening. We can barely, there's like a squeaking noise, but that's about it. There we go. Now you're working.
That's working?
That is.
Hi, that was really weird. Hi. Um, so, yeah, I've been working, you know, with Shane on the broadband. Just to update you on what I've been talking about the last couple of meetings, we had the public hearing yesterday for the Tiffany Energy Pilot Program. Couple of people showed up. We did a public hearing. We had no written comments about the project, so the IDA board will be moving forward with the next steps on that project. And we are, we just, we did just have contact last week about another few pilot programs, possibly in Coventry. They're working with the Coventry town right now on their local solar law. Just looked at preliminary application with them right now. They are officially coming to us for a pilot yet, but we had a good meeting with them last week. It's one company, possibly three different five-megawatt projects in Coventry. We're just working on our 2021 budget, and tomorrow, we're holding a legislative breakfast at the silo. There's, you can come in person, you can participate virtually. There's still some seats available. All of our elected officials are gonna be there, so we're very excited about that.
Mike?
I don't have anything.
Steve, do you have anything more?
No, nothing more.
Thank you. Mr. Beal?
Well, hi. Good to see you all again.
Missed you.
Been a long time. I don't know, a couple of years ago.
At least.
No, I'm just happy to be here. They scared me to the point where I didn't want to do much, but I'm the backup.
Mr. Beal was up playing at the brewery not too long ago, and I was there to hear him. He was, he sounded just as good as he did, how old are you now? About 80? He sounded very good. He's way younger than I am, but I was pleased to be hearing him and kind of did my hard good to even be out for a little bit. So thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
And the only thing I've got is, I think I've only been to one meeting in North Norwich. My next-door neighbor, Scott Evans, picks me up and we go, he's on the town planning board. And if memory serves, and you may have gotten it and you may not have, there was a guy there that needed something about butchering pigs, and I think it was up in the Wappenach or somewhere, but I'm not sure. Did you get anything from North Norwich?
Not if it was out of Wappenach at all. It wouldn't be reviewable by us.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't know. But that's what I'm remembering. We met outdoors and somebody was, wanted to be hot butchering pigs. That's it.
Yes.
Follow-up on George's LED thing. Town Norwich got converted, I think around the first of the year, and we were going through some of the budget process last night at town board meeting and looking at the reviewing electric bills. I guess at least 50% savings. I was really surprised. People were like that. Yeah. We had like five lights. That's all I have, size the 239s.
What did you say that people are gonna like?
50% savings on electric.
Under, in the lighting district, under taxes in the lighting district.
May I interject something? I have a friend up in Aurora that is getting very poor reception on her tablet and so forth, and she wonders if the Evans, that great big thing, the Evans is interfering.
I doubt it.
Or is it just spectrum's problem?
I couldn't tell you that.
There's been a lot of issues with people in the downtown Norwich area. I think it's just the hills.
You don't know why? Okay.
Shane, do you have any? Greenham?
No.
Meeting adjourned.
All right.
Hang on, let me switch these over. Yeah, right. It's gonna be a zone.
It's gonna be a hundred percent. Yes.
All right.
I can hold up.
Are you gonna talk about this stuff?
We have, we have a whole bunch of 239s, yes.
Yeah, a lot of them.
A lot of them. Are we doing anything with this German and Norwich?
We're gonna talk about it. I'll talk about it.
Okay. Okay, the first one is a revisit from the Austin subdivision of last month. They supplied a survey map. The best I can figure and Paul can confirm this, there's a 53-acre lot, which is lot number one. Bring up the map. Okay, and that, they're keeping the house, reserving that out, which is in the, that's lot one, and right there is the house.
That's his shop.
A shop, okay, all right.
His house is on 53.
Okay, so then, so that's the 53-acre lot one, and then 93- Okay, so then, so that's the 53 acre lot one and then 93 acre lot two, which is both sides of the Great Book Road, which is County Route. Twenty eight, okay. That's why we're doing this. Paul, would you have anything to interject?
Not really, I guess, at this time.
Does anybody have any questions?
Were there, were there any objections by the planning board?
No.
I guess since they seem to satisfy what we asked for last month, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
So move. Next is the orders.
Testing how quick I can do this.
All right.
Not very quick if it's taking this long.
Listen, Mike.
I wish Paul was here and it's giving us better, but.
Oops, wrong one. Whoops, don't, don't do that.
Oh, don't do that. Right, it's a point three five acre. Do you have the survey map?
Yeah, hang on.
I got it right here. So is that red triangle or piece?
Zoom in over here. All right, so basically on the screen, you can see this little triangle piece right down here, this little skinny thing. They're merging that with the neighbor. That's all that's being done. The north. Yeah, this, the southern side parcel is selling it to the north side parcel.
So you're just merging and not something?
It's subdivision, it's basically a lot line adjustment.
Right.
So.
Sanic motions to approve.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, we'll take George's motion. Second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Got to share it.
Okay, this is on Route 23 west of Norwich. Lewis is on both sides of the road, it's the same tax parcel. They want to sell east side of the road, just above, to fill out that square is a landlot piece. And this, right there, so it's sold to the person that has the landlot piece. So they'll have access off from 23 down below that. The town, Town Norwich Planning Board had no concerns on it. We're still waiting to hear from DOTI, so.
Got to send this down.
You have to send it, yeah. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So move.
That's where I'm at. I stay. I'll be down for a minute.
Yes.
Okay, so this is Charles Route on County Route 33. It's like a third generation dairy farm. He sold his cows about a year ago. He came to plan a board with a subdivision plan, but he didn't want to spend any money on a survey, so he wasn't sure if he's going to sell, there are going to be big lots, wasn't sure where he's going to sell. He sold one lot off from Uptown Road, joins the property. He wants to sell two more. I got refresh.
Where'd you say that is?
I kind of out 33.
Where the road used to go.
Yeah, right, right. So, so he's selling selling eight point four acres, which is where?
Good question.
Okay, it's where it says the one oh, right, right there. So where your arrow, down, 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 down. Over, 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 no, no way. Right there, right there. All right, that eight point four acres and then above that, oh no, on the other side of the road, down, right there, 29 acres. He's doing a lot of survey, there's one lot line that's going to be created, rather than just, you know, a piece off the side of, one side of the road versus the other. He doesn't want to do a survey, so I said, if your attorneys can describe it, we don't really care. So we didn't have any concerns on it than that. It's in an ag district and also on the county road, that's why you're reviewing it. Any questions?
Will the county clerk's office accept it without a survey?
They'll have to do a survey before they file it, but as far as their review, they're working.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, this is the Alteron subdivision or.
Got to pull it up still.
All right.
There you go.
All right, so this is Alteron property. They had their corporate headquarters there back when they were going to develop basically the whole east side of Norwich on the hill. Then it was an enterprise car rental place and it's been vacant for probably five, six years at least.
Fourteen.
Fourteen years. So they've sold the house or it's under contract. But the flattest access to the rest of the hill is just north of there, so they wish to reserve a ninety foot strip along the north property line and deed that to their tax partial that surrounds the rest of the property, basically. So ninety foot there and attach it just above that to the east.
I can't draw anymore.
Yeah, so back to the top part of that.
Somewhere up there.
Yeah, and then the rest, the rest of, another whole tax piece is up for your later on up there now. So attach it to that. Basically, there's a gas right away that runs on the other side of it. We didn't have any concerns. Bruce is here representing Realty USA or whatever it is, right?
It's Howard Hannah.
Howard Hannah, now I'm sorry, yeah, right. Right. Do you have any other questions?
Well, basically, they, they own 790 acres. And this would be the best access to it because it's the flattest. So if they ever do begin developing the hill, that they, I have the specs for the town road. And they want to put in a road that meets town specifications and use it to access the hill. So they don't want to create a new tax map, no, they just want to take ninety feet from water or around the other.
That hasn't been set to deal with either.
Nope.
Okay, the only, the only DOT here I have is you got residential driveway, another driveway, and then going north of there, driveway, driveway, driveway. So hopefully they don't, I know they're going to come back with their normal driveway for my thing, but also they don't say too many driveways in a row. But we won't encourage that. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? So a motion to approve pending.
DOT.
DOT comments.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All favor? Enough to look at here. All right, so well, I've told the planning board that the Town Norwiches have been, and probably for, since the first of the year, been working on the renewable energy law. Basically plagiarized the town Guilfords with a couple of minor changes. Last night at the town board meeting, we did a negative deck on the Seeker. And now we moved it to 239 for comments.
I haven't read it yet. Well, I didn't read it.
If I else have any comments, questions?
Just questions, you're really dealing with solar.
It's all, just when it's all. What?
Just solar?
Yeah, it's, it's a two-part law.
Wind and solar.
Wind and solar.
Okay.
I mean, they're written, they're separate but together. It's not the same document, but it's basically two separate things. Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Yep, there goes.
We can do that when I have it there. This is in.
Smyrna.
Smyrna. Point zero six one acre subdivision in the detail on the map. Right there.
Yeah, they're just basically just subdividing a piece off.
Right.
Just any old piece or what?
Yeah, pretty much.
There's a cert, that's a survey right there, right? And then the details, I mean. Right, yeah, I got a laptop, so I can adjust. So it's way over, it's way over in, it's in that circle way over on the left. There's a detail.
No comments from you, Mike.
Like to make a comment to request a map that's legible?
This is from Smyrna.
Oh, this meets their standard of code. So it's just that.
There it is in that circle on the, on the left.
Yeah, and they're zooming in or in the bottom right.
Right. Yeah, and then it's down in the, or right there. That's, that's the actual survey, right there. No, 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 up in it, in that circle.
Oh, here?
Yeah, there.
Good lord, it's tiny. Here it is, right here.
You didn't, you just stay on the lines.
So explain, they're just taking that triangle and adding it to a different parcel or what?
Oh, it's point zero six one acres.
We didn't get an explanation, we didn't get an application.
This is all we got.
This is all we got. Two thirty nine is the middle, which said point zero six one acre subdivision, and that's another photocopy of the map, which we're working from.
So they're just subdividing off 2,500 square feet from that parcel?
Excuse me?
They're subdividing this off as 2,500 separate feet? Separate square feet, so I mean, they don't even tell you what they're doing, they're just saying it's a subdivision, 2,500 square feet.
Basically, there's a little line right here.
Yeah, I see it, I just, I didn't know if they're adding it or subtracting it or subdividing usually means you're pulling it off and making.
Selling to somebody else, but it's, I mean, it's in an intersection of a of a road, right?
Yeah.
Part of a Y on a road.
See, what I think is happening is see this little building right here? I think they're just taking off this building. So basically it's doing it right here.
Oh, gotcha. Must be.
I mean, it's fine with me, I just, I, I, I would just say that, you know, hopefully.
Hopefully you know what you're doing because we can't see it.
I mean, to me, it looks like it's behind a bunch of different lots and like, how are all those, are they all in the same lot or, I mean, or is there separate tax maps in there? Do we have a map of our own from the county?
There it is.
So there's no property lines in there?
Yeah, it's right here. See it in the blue?
That's, that's a subdivision.
No, this is the property line right here. This is the entire property line.
Maybe there's other houses on it then too.
There's another house here. There's another house or some kind of building here.
I bet you they're taking it, like you said, just to get it off on that road and Wilcox Road's got it right away, right? So.
Yeah, and it looks like they're just taking this little piece.
I was just looking at the map and it looked weird to me because, you know, the aerial is distorted, I think, so.
Looks like right here, just about, just taking this building.
Yep, probably adding it back to the farm.
The reason we're doing this is it's in an ag district, so it's on town roads other than that. Make a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Sure.
So this is on.
There.
This is kind of, Route 12 is down in the bottom part of the aerial there. So I don't know if that's old Route 12 or.
It is, yep.
Used to be or whatever, so Jenega Station, correct, right there. The last gas station of Shango County is right down at the bottom left hand.
Right down here.
Right there, just so everybody knows where they are. So this individual wants to open up Shango Mercy Vehicle. They'll be installing flashing lights and radios and anything to do with that and ambulances and police cars or anything along those lines.
I believe this used to be the Jenbrook-Milbrook Building that we reviewed probably five or six, maybe even more years ago.
I was actually going to write, make sure what you're doing.
What are they breaking off? Are they breaking off that entire booth?
They're not really doing, it's just opening a business there.
Yeah, I think it's.
They're not doing anything other than, than change of use.
Yeah, this is just a site plan review, it's not a.
It's not a subdivision, right.
Building used to install emergency lighting sirens for emergencies vehicles, that's all there, it's just a change in use from being vacant to this.
Any concerns by the green planning board?
No. And also this is a DOT as well.
Sanic motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
The last business that was in that building was making kitty litter out of fly ash from power coal-fired power plants.
How'd that go?
They wound up moving, I believe, to Ohio where they had a huge pile of it as feedstock.
I don't know how it wound up at the end.
All right, this is in the, we're at Guilford. All right, this is Town of Guilford, this is the Dennis subdivision, I'll let Bob.
Yeah, this is a longer date. It's a 67 acre parcel, they're just breaking off five acres of that. Yeah, this is a longer date. Um, it's a sixty-seven acre parcel. They're just breaking off five acres of that, um, it's been, and that's, I'm trying to pronounce that, it's from a, a house that, um, simple subdivision. We had no concerns.
I've not sent it to DOT yet. I will.
Okay.
Take care. They're two foot above the flood zone, or whatever it is for fever eggs.
Medbury Road is right here.
Oh, okay.
Just north of Medbury Road.
The, the roadside property should be above, 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 right? Like, they've already started working on that.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I agree, the next one?
Yep.
Uh, this is also a longer date, but it's just above, um, I'm up in, on the, on the right, on the riverside. Mr. Hager, he owns parcel of about an acre. He's gonna divide that. His concern is that he's gonna be the older gentleman. He wants to make sure that it's further in the of the property of their own. So again, we have no concerns.
Where, where is he breaking it off?
Split in half.
Split in half.
Should that be, uh, one point oh six acres split in half?
Right, right.
Comments?
Again, haven't sent a DOT yet, but will.
Motion to approve pending.
I'll make that motion.
Sucker?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same again.
Two exceptions. First Fergers?
First Fergers, this is on Walbert, uh, again, it's a fairly large parcel of property, also hundred acres. So, kind of dividing, he's off, uh, about fifty acres. So again, simple subdivision, offered where it is, and I get access, which case is getting divided off.
I thought it was like a half to the center. No, okay.
Shane?
Before I go, could I see the, the maps? Because I couldn't see. I just wanted to keep it to.
I, I didn't hear, what are they doing? Just subdividing one piece from the other?
They're trying to figure it out right now, hang on.
Two, two parcels, one fifty acres, one forty-nine.
So one is forty-nine point seven, and one is about fifty-two. Is it along the road, Bob, or, or, it's along the road, Mike?
Any other questions, comments?
Where, so they're not, the lines aren't shown.
They're just basically where my mark is, Mike. Ring cut off here. Just being severed.
Oh, so those parcels are coming off?
Yep.
And then being subdivided in that manner?
Yeah, we're, right, so can you see my yellow line?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like a land hook, but.
It is, so they're just breaking it off at the road.
Okay.
They're gonna break this off right here.
Right into butterfly.
Did we have, did we have a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Sucker?
Steve then.
Favor?
Not.
Aye.
Look, Sanchez.
We got geared out on this.
Right. Yeah, this is Long County Route thirty-eight, or between Guilford and Vanbridge. She's here, now owns property on the one side of the road. She's going to, on, on both sides of the road, she said. She's keeping all her acreage on one side, on the side where she's subdivided, and she's keeping a four acre parcel. Includes a barn, she keeps horses, that kind of thing, and subdividing the rest of that. The one that's interesting, little twist on this, is that she owns taxes on the property initially, when we got it. We didn't think we could process it. We talked with the county and they encouraged us to go ahead, and the intent, Mr. Giordano from the beginning, was to use the money from selling the parcel to pay our taxes. So, we encouraged us to go ahead and do the subdivision. We filed with the county, it won't actually become official until she actually pays the taxes. So that was kind of a new twist for us, but we had no concern about the subdivision, so.
Fire tools, a little defensive.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? Or motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Sucker?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
So, what happened to all our maps, Shane? Like, we, we used to have like nice maps that would show where these subdivisions are.
We had, we had.
Planner back in those days?
Mike, we had eleven applications in two days.
So, um, we're missing.
Alright, so you wanna deal with the, the city one and the?
Yep, so we also had, um, two things were sent to us. One is a notice of public hearing, which has already actually happened. Um, it was opportunities for Shnango. They want.
I'm sorry. Did we vote?
Sure, why not?
All favor?
Okay.
So on West Main Street, opportunities for Shnango, um, was requesting a sign variance, uh, because they were gonna, um, replace their existing free stand sign with a bigger one. Um, it will be lighted, but, um, yeah. So it wasn't actually a two thirty-nine review, but it was just something we were notified of, so I just wanted to kind of forward that on to you. We also got a, um, the town of German Towne Board. It was a notice of intent to be the seeker lead agency. Um, they're proposing a pilot agreement in connection with the German Community Solar Project. Again, this isn't a two thirty-nine review, but they just kind of wanted us, let us know that they were taking lead agency status. And that's all I have. There's the map of it.
Thank you, everybody.